Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Board of Selectmen meeting, June 2nd, 2015. Would you kindly stand and join us in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is public announcements. We usually start at the end. Alex, please.
I have an announcement. For the last month or so, I've been traveling around Plymouth County with some of the state reps, Josh Cutler, Jim Cantwell, Tom Calder, and they've been doing heroin and opiate forums, and each town is trying to get a task force or a coalition going. So I've, I plan to have a meeting right here in this room at Town Hall on Tuesday, June 23rd at 7:00 PM, and it will be an informational meeting, and anyone who's invited, parents, grandparents, kids, addicts, recovering addicts, anyone that wants to get involved in this. Massachusetts has more heroin and opiate deaths than any other state in the country, and between Abington and Plymouth, we have more than anyone in the state. Plymouth is now on track to have one death per month this year, and they had six last year. You've all seen in the paper, the police chief and the police department making the heroin bust. It's rampant around here. So anyone that would like to get involved, you're definitely invited. There'll be several state reps, Senator Keen in Plymouth County, Sheriff McDonald, Register of Probate Matt McDonough, and they're all here to help us get something going in town. So again, that's Tuesday, June 23rd, 7:00 PM, right here in the Carter Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Kenny?
On weekend of June 13th and 14th, led by President of the Historical Society of Old Abington Doug Ulwick, a group of us have gotten together to celebrate the completion of the Island Grove Memorial Och restoration. The event will kick off on Saturday with a Civil War encampment, similar to the one that happened for our 300th anniversary. There'll also be a candlelight tour that night. Camp activities will run from 9:00 to 9:00 on that Saturday. There will also be a musical program featuring Shades of Grey, who sing the music back from the Civil War era, and if anybody remembers the luminaries on the Island Grove Bridge, that that will also be recreated. 300 lights on the Island Grove Bridge is really quite a sight to see. On the following day, and this whole thing is gonna, we're gonna try to make this a yearly tradition, this is gonna be the first annual Flag Day weekend, but that Sunday, June 14th, we hope to have a family picnic day. There'll be three or four musical acts. The Lions Club will be there, selling their hot dogs and their famous strawberry shortcake. Cream will also be there for ice cream, so we invite the families to attend that day. We'll have musical for all different age groups, so that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Andy?
If you're out and about this summer and perhaps looking to quench your thirst, be sure to stop by Martin Street in Abington along with their parents, siblings. Julie, seven, and Norman Monroe, eight, made a decision at the Memorial Day Parade that they wanted to give back to veterans and have set up shop with a lemonade stand at their home. The stand is open every Sunday from 11:00 AM till 3:00 PM, weather permitting, through Labor Day, and a portion of the proceeds raised will go to the benefit of the DNEV Fund.
All right. Thank you, man.
Thank you. This announcement is, Abington High School hosts mental health and wellness seminar. That will be Monday, June 8th, 5:00 PM, at the Paul K. Smith Room at the Abington High School. The event will include a presentation by Sherri Damon, who is the Director on the Integrated Center for Counseling and Wellness in Hingham, as she talks about the important topics related to mental health and wellness that impact teens and adults of all ages. The program is free, and for those who have any questions about this, you can contact Kate Casey at katecasey@abbingtonps.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in our meeting, it was my honor to pay tribute to our retiring Animal Control Officer, Mr. Hammond, who sits in the middle in the back, just like he conducts himself, very quiet. He's out there seven days a week, 24 hours a day. He, he's always done his job. He's, he's tried to beat the crows to some of these roadkill. He does a good job, the crows, he gets there before the crows. He's doing his job. I have a proclamation from the board, and then I'm gonna invite anybody that wants to say anything is more than welcome to come up and use the microphone, including you, Bob.
Mike, should we get him up here so everyone can?
Yeah. What's that? Bob, could you come up here, please? I mean, if we're gonna embarrass you, we're gonna go all the way.
We're gonna do it right.
Whereas Robert Hammond has served the town of Abington as Animal Control Officer, Animal Inspector, from 1984 to 1993, and from 2010 through 2015, whereas Robert Hammond has always demonstrated professionalism in carrying out his duties, keeping up to date with any changes in the bylaws and Massachusetts general laws pertaining to animal control. Whereas Robert Hammond has made a point of answering all inquiries and calls for assistance in a timely, knowledgeable, and courteous fashion, resulting in almost no calls to the Selectmen's Office. Whereas Robert Hammond has made every effort to reconnect lost pets with their owners. Whereas Robert Hammond has consistently devoted much more time and effort than the hours allotted for his position, making himself available 24/7 to the town's public safety officials, as well as the public often getting called out during the middle of the night. Now, therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, recognize Robert Hammond for his dedication, hard work, and commitment to the town. Thank you, Bob, for a job well done. You will be leaving at very big shoes to fill. Michael Franny, Maureen Jansen, Andrew Burbine, Alex Buzjensen, and Kenny Coyle. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the honor of receiving this. I believe in the job I've done in the last, I started with in '72, often on, I care about the people, I care about the animals. That's why I'm out there. I know we had a case of some dead animals, we took care of them. I don't like seeing that on the road. We go into a situation to talk to people, we're not gonna cut anybody's necks off. We talk the situation over, see what they want, see what the complaint wants, and we come in the middle, everyone's happy. I never usually go back to a call I've been on. I enjoy the job. With my wife's health being bad and myself getting a little weaker, I felt it was this time, I just don't feel like I'm doing the job there. I still do the job, but not as well as I like to do it. And I would just hope that whoever takes my place will be sincere to the job, dedicated, you have to be dedicated. And if that phone rings at 2:00 in the morning, get your shoes on and go. If the dog or cow, whatever, might need your help. I know a lot of animal control officers after 4:00 in the afternoon, they don't care. I'm from the old school, I care. And I think you find most people, if you ask you about Bob Hammond, they'll tell you, decent guy, he's fair, I've always been fair. So I thank you very much for my honor, and I enjoyed working here, and I'll still be on the old squares looking in. Thank you very much.
Just, Bob, if you could come back up here for a minute, just, my fault, I should've presented this, but I was just kinda curious, what's the largest animal you have ever attended to in the town?
No, I just, I've had horses in the past.
No kidding?
Yeah, if I, let me tell you a quick story, a funny, true story. I go visit my wife, she's in rehab, I get a call for David Deere fell in the cellar well, around the 17th Strawberry Lane, so I went over there. The head was probably that big, fine, so I hooked on my pole, guy said, I don't want to touch it. So I grab him, and the mother's standing outside the edge of the road, out of the woods. I took him out, up and down the ground, and they joined together. That's, that's where you get the good meal.
Well, just before you go, Leanne Adams and Barbara from the Town Clerk's Office, they, they have a little presentation they'd like to make to you on behalf of the town employees?
Yes, sir. Oh. I don't really need this, but, okay. So these are for Andy, because behind every great man is a fabulous woman, and you take care of her.
I said that, behind every good man is a fabulous woman.
Absolutely.
They're gonna get in trouble.
And we will miss you.
Thank you.
And Leanne will something for you.
Thank you, Leanne. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just very briefly, in the, about two years since I've been here, I, it's such a novelty to get a call of any concern or complaint about an animal that reaches our office that I actually saved it, because it's such a novelty, so that's how odd it is that, for that to happen. So, so I wanna thank Bob for, for what he does, and what he does really to, to make our lives easier, as well as yours, so, and I know that one of the things that I've informed the board before is that we are looking to, because, and I hate to tell you this, Bob, now, but we were getting such a great deal with you. The problem is, is we're trying to maintain a very modest structure for our animal control budget, so we're working with Whitman and Hanson to try to do that collectively. It's not gonna be easy, but we think we can pull it off, but if I told you this a couple years ago, you would've been looking for more money, so, sorry about that. So I wanna thank Bob personally, too, for making my life fairly simple here with that regard, so, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, under 6:30, we have a Board of Selectmen, Water, Board of Water Commissioners joint appointment to a vacancy on the Board of Water Commissioners. Would you guys like to pull up a seat, please, or whatever you wanna do?
Yes, pull up a couple of seats.
Yeah, right over here, it's fine.
Yeah, just get some seats up.
Yeah, that's fine, whatever you, whatever you wanna do. Are you guys in session right now? You opened a session. It should be in a public session to vote.
We call it a session.
Yep, that's fine.
Does it?
Okay.
We have one gentleman, Mike Egan, if you'd like to come up and just say a couple words, Mike, just so that the residents know who to blame when they get in muddy water.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Barbara. Thanks, Leanne.
I was getting nervous for a minute there. There's another opening in town, and I don't think I want that one, that's for sure. Well, anyways, good evening, everybody. My name's Mike Egan. I've been a resident of Abington for 22 years, going on 23. I reside here with my wife and two children. We moved here from the city many years ago, and, and we've, we've lived a good life here in Abington. I care a lot about the town, I've been involved in many, many things here, youth basketball, youth baseball, some other activities in the town. I volunteer, I have a disjockey service that I volunteer for, many of the benefits that that go on throughout the town. And I noticed there was a vacancy on the Water Commission, and I, I didn't feel that any, any of these seats should go vacant, and I now have the time that I could put into the vacancy, and, you know, and I think that, I think the town and, and the commission, the Water Department and the commission would benefit from an extra person in there, and I guess that's, those are my reasons for doing it. I do have a background in construction, I'm, I am a licensed electrician, so I do, you know, it's a far cry from plumbing and, and water, but the construction aspects of all those types of things, I am pretty well-versed in that sort of thing, so I've been in many attractions installing pipes, so I kinda know how that goes. So anyway, I'd appreciate your consideration for me for, for the Water Commission, and I'd appreciate it, and that's, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mike, well done. Questions from the board?
Just one piece. Bob, do you realize this is just an appointment until April?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you plan on running in April?
I think I would, yes, yeah. I think I would. As long as, you know, if there's an opening, I've seen the lack of interest in a lot of the, you know, the elected positions in town, so I would, you know, when I, when I do make the decision to do something like this, I go wholeheartedly at it, and, and I put the commitment in.
Thanks, Mike.
You realize who you're serving with, though.
That was the part, yeah, that was the toughest making the decision.
Just, just so the residents know.
You need to ride to the meeting, so I figured that.
We, the town has three water commissioners, and they serve jointly with three from the town of Rockland, and that's the Joint Water Works, but we have our own water commissioners. Chip Muncie, I believe you're the chairman?
Correct.
Chip is the chairman, and Bob Toomey, and shortly is gonna be Mike Egan. So if you have any complaints with your water, the camera can just span over the thing, you can like, no, it's, it's a tough job, and, you know, obviously, just a question that would probably come up in the thing, with the recent rain, you think we're still gonna have the total water ban, or you don't?
Yeah.
Reason being, not enough, or?
In Palingdantin.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually have a question, too, for the Water Commissioners, this is just procedural. There's three people from Rockland, three people from Abington, right? And when you, folks vote, usually it's an odd number of people on a committee, you know? Would, are they deadlocks, and how, what, if so, how's that happen?
A lot of, a lot of it is, Abington has their meeting, and we conduct Abington meeting. Rockland has their meeting, they conduct Abington business.
Yeah, yeah.
And then usually the board is just there for capital projects, so there's, there's not a lot of.
So there's not much voting with six members?
There's separate meetings.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
So there's, there's actually three meetings, there's three budgets, they're separate, it's crazy.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to?
Appoint Mike Egan to Maureen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. You gentlemen, take a vote, please, so, for the record.
I'm gonna make a motion. I move that we accept Mike Egan as the fill-in alternate until May, April of next year.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Very much appreciated.
You know you have to. One minute.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Good volunteer.
Thank you, Mike.
Don't forget to adjourn.
Thank you, guys.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, 6:35, we have Chris Walsh, request for holding a fundraiser carnival, July 1st through the 3rd, 2015. Chris, please.
Thank you for your time. I'm actually here on behalf of Abington Youth Soccer, I'm the treasurer for the board, actually, you can see me, Deer Refund as well. I'm looking to, we're trying to raise some funds for the Youth Soccer, for potential future projects with fields, but also for improving our programs for the kids in the Youth Soccer, and once again, they, I got placed on me, be on the fundraising committee, and I'm coming, I came from Randolph seven years ago, and when I was over there, we used the carnival as a means to supplement the sports programs in town, then we added fireworks at a later point. And I've been in touch with a company called Cushing Amusements, they've been in business since 1908. They actually just performed the amusement carnival over in Canton last weekend, and he said he had an opening for July 1st to the 3rd of this year, to, and I told him, I said, I had to get permission from the town before I approached anybody, and I actually was in touch with Chairman Franny over the item, and what I'm requesting is to be able to use a parking space available, you know, preferably one of the schools, because the parking lot's bigger. They don't need a lot of space, I actually went and overlooked the one in Canton, and I looked at the one they do in Randolph as well. They don't use a lot of space. I prefer the high school one, because it's a, it's a deadlock, I think for, people can come down, it's more parking down this end, they were gonna do one of the locations, but Superintendent Schaefer also suggested maybe possibly the Woodsdale to be used as well. What else I have? I'd like to turn it, actually, myself, I'd like to turn it to an annual event, which is what they do over in Randolph as well. And this gentleman, it was way too close, he, he said he would actually help supplement the fireworks going forward, but I told him it was too short, you'd have to get the Fire Marshal's permission. I deal with the fireworks in the Fire Department over in Randolph, and it's not enough time to put that together, but, and I told him, I said, I think that the Selectmen would like to see your commitment to a carnival first, before we get into dealing with the fireworks portion of it, because that's more safe, you have to make sure you have the right drop zone for the fireworks to go off. Other than that, I don't know if anybody has any questions, or like that.
Just, just so the board knows, I believe you contacted the Fire Department?
I, I have been in touch with Chief Nettle, I spoke to him.
It's just a matter of getting permission from the schools, which we have talked, the answer certainly isn't no to provide.
Exactly, no, actually, he, he actually made a suggestion, I didn't even think about Woodsdale. He actually mentioned Woodsdale as well, Superintendent Schaefer.
Mr. Chairman, what would the hours be?
That's up to us, how we wanna, I think they usually like, it's July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, so it's rolling right into the 4th of July. I'm like, my fault for not having a calendar, I'm not sure what days of the week it is, but I mean, we could just tell them we want it operating, that's how we do it.
No, I'm not suggesting hours, I'm just curious, because if it's gonna be at night, obviously, I would suggest the high school rather than Woodsdale, because you have neighbors abutting Woodsdale.
I agree with that.
So I'd rather see it at the high school. I, I'm not concerned about the hours, I'm just curious.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
First is a Wednesday.
Okay, so it'll be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
If not, I'll accept. These folks are, I'm, I'm sure, they're, they have insurance and?
Oh, they have, they have everything, actually.
Do they buy that to us, do they?
They will have to, yes. Before they use any town property, they'll have to do that, correct?
So I'd accept the motion.
Well, should we put hours on it, or, you know, if you don't wanna go in?
I would.
And what do these usually go to, do you know? 10, 9?
I'd say, I mean, I'd say the latest you probably have is 10, maybe 11. If we did up here, I.
It's kinda late, I think.
Yeah, but that's when we get, I can, I can work with Mr. LaFond, if you'd like, and coordinate times, if that makes it easier for you.
I would suggest that. I think this is more Tykes type carnival, right? Little kids?
Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna be, it's not Six Flags by any means, so.
I mean, you all have rides for me, though, right?
Oh, yeah, I have a pony ride for you.
Kitty rides for you.
I was talking, when they have it, I think it's 10.
Yeah, a quick question. I know it's Cushing Amusement, so there's food and everything there?
They'll, they'll, I believe that they have like, they'll have like the fried dough and stuff like that, but I'll make sure they have, you know, I'll reach out to Board of Health, and I can make sure that, yes.
Yeah, good, that's what I was gonna mention.
Yeah, I can, I mean, they've been in business since 9:00 to 8:00. He's actually the great grandson of the, of the owner, and, you know, like I said, they, they work in the area, he's familiar with it, he actually drove through to look at different areas, so they're very familiar with the business, so, you know, and he actually said he had all kinds of, you know, extra queries on all his employees, not just general, but anybody that would come in and sell anything, like a vendor, they all, they all, he has a background on everybody, so they're, they're very safe.
Awesome. Just wanted to point that out, I know Health wouldn't want to be.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. I guess the other question would be, the police department involved in this at all, as far as traffic and that sort of thing? You know, run that by?
That's correct, yes, and the chief is aware of this, and once the location is solidified, he'll be able to outline what requirements that the proponent will have.
Okay.
But he's well aware, obviously, of this request.
All right, thank you.
So motion, and the motion probably include that the public safety concerns have been met with the approval of the town manager, and that would probably cover everybody.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burbine.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Coyle. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Aye.
Just one question before you go, we were planning, Chris and I have talked it a few times, on, do we have any idea when the report's coming back from Old Colony Planning? They, they mentioned June, that's why I didn't know.
I'll have, I'll have to check, Mike, I don't have a, I haven't spoken to them in several weeks here, so I'll, I'll check and get back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Franny's volunteering for the dunk tank, too, by the way, just to let you know. One hit and the water would all be out of it. Thanks, Chris, good luck.
Good luck, Chris, thank you. Thanks for doing it.
See you again.
I did my time in a dunk tank, for the 300.
Yeah. Okay, we next have Patrick Eddy, manager, Tent District Brewing.
Yes.
For permit for samplings on the premises. And there are a lot of people asking about that.
Yeah, there are.
So you know.
Good things. Thank you, good evening, my name's Patrick Eddy, I'm here with Dana George, we are co-owners of Tent District Brewing Company at 491 Washington Street in Abington Center. Just to give everyone a little background about our business, the journey we've been on so far, we came before the zoning board back in August to obtain the necessary variances and permits that we needed to operate in that location. We obtained our federal brewer's notice in January of this year, and our state farmer brewer license in March. Since then, we've just been getting the place up and running, running and ready to go, and hope to open in the next six to eight weeks. Our operation will be a very small-scale type of operation, often referred to as a nano-brewery. We'll be brewing and selling our recipes, craft beer. At this location, customers will purchase a growler from us, a reusable bottle, roughly this, this size, have it filled with the beer of their choice, and will consume it off-premise. We are not opening a bar, or a brew pub, or anything like that. It's more of a production facility with sort of a retail angle to it. We're here tonight because we want to request the ability to serve two-ounce samples, we brought a cup to show basically what we're talking about. This is a four-ounce cup, so we're talking about a half, half a fill of, in that cup. It's mainly to help customers decide what type of beer they want to purchase. We originally under the impression, in talking with the ABCC, that we would need what's called a pourer's permit, in order to do the sampling, but after speaking with them further, it turns out that we don't need a pouring permit. A pouring permit is really designed for places that want to sell full pints, and have people hang around, and, and that sort of thing. I think everyone has a copy of the advisory from the ABCC on this matter. They do, however, while they have said that in order to do sampling, we do not need a pouring permit, they have requested that we come before the board, so that the board can determine if providing samples constitute a sale. In speaking with them, it's really about, if there's money changing hands, then it's a sale, and since we do not intend to charge for these samples, we don't think it constitutes a sale. So we're looking forward to opening this new business in Abington, and thank you for considering the request. Happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Questions? Mr. Burbine.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
We haven't settled on those yet, we are thinking a couple of nights a week for maybe two hours, extended hours on Saturday. It's really going to be a matter of how much traffic and sales we can support. We have a finite amount of beer that we can produce with our system, and every other place that we've talked to that has started this type of business has been overwhelmed at the beginning in terms of interest, so I think we're gonna start smaller in terms of hours, and see how it goes, and perhaps expand from there.
And how many different flavors of beer will you have at one particular time?
At any one time, probably four, you know, it's when it comes to sampling, it's, we're in business, obviously, so it's not our intention to give away sample after sample, we're, we're hoping to make some money, but we, what we would like to do for someone who comes in and sees that we have a stout or a porter, I'm not sure, I like that, and what does it taste like, is it too heavy? It's really about helping to educate the customer, and, and help them make the decision if they want to spend the money on, on that type of beer versus another.
Thank you.
After the fact, you have the sampling now, if a customer were to come in and wanted to try a certain beer, could they still do it on-premise?
We don't have the license for that right now, this is, the request for sampling is, is, is outside of the pouring permit, as we discussed. Longer term, if we wanted to expand the business into something else where people could stay, we would have to come back before the board and request the pouring permit, but the location that we have, we don't know if it's suitable for that, so at this point, we're just looking to be able to provide samples, other places that we've toured and been to. Some do it, some don't, some have requested the right to do it, others have not, but we feel it's something that we'd like to offer to our customers.
Very good. Any questions? What's the date and the time, again, just for the residents that, that are watching?
Date and time?
Opening, opening date?
Well, the, yeah.
Well, the hours of operation.
The tasting, and then the...
It was, it's not, we're not really talking about a tasting per se on a specific date. This would be part of our normal operation.
Okay, okay.
Somebody comes in during business hours, wants to make a purchase, and wants to try, you know, a sample of the product before they purchase it and leave.
Okay, but you don't have business hours set per se just yet?
I think, we are definitely looking at probably Saturdays for a handful of hours on Saturdays, and we haven't really locked it in.
You have locked in opening date yet?
We do not. We are in the process of going through our, our test batches right now. We want to see how those come out.
So if the board hangs out there like Saturday morning, we might get...
Sure.
Any further questions?
I did have one. As far as training for people who are gonna be distributing this, do they go through any training as far as IDing and that sort of?
We are the employees. We are the two employees, technically not really employees, we're the co-owners.
Owners, yeah.
Yes, we'll be running the operation day to day. We, we don't plan on hiring anybody in the very near future.
Okay, thank you.
Are you guys tips trained, or not, not yet, no?
I was, we were both tips trained, yeah. Dana's worked in the restaurant business for, for many years. I, I've worked in a bar setting as well, as well as a brewery and a distributor for many years, so we have been through that in the past.
Okay. Motion?
So the, the motion based upon the ABCC directive is that the licensing authority find that, determine that sampling on premises does not constitute a sale. I think the appropriate motion under the ABCC advisory.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Coyle, seconded by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of May 18, 2015, open session minutes.
Will they be approved?
The motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Jansen, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number two is vote to authorize priority items within the co-located middle school and high school project invitation to bid plans and specifications. Rich, I'm Mary, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, perfect, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Mahoney. I'm the owners' project manager representing KVA for the co-located middle school, high school project for Abington. What we're in front of the committee tonight to discuss is the use of proprietary specs for the bid document for the new school. Basically, we are asking for six items to be considered for a proprietary spec, and a proprietary spec is meaning that we would specify one vendor, or one system, or component that would meet the needs of the facility. Under state procurement laws, Chapter 3039M, public projects are required to specify three manufacturers or systems for each component, and also allow for an or equal. However, if there is justification for doing so, a governing body can vote to utilize proprietary specs. So during the last year and a half, we've worked with the school system, also with the fire department, police departments, to identify any items that may be required to be proprietary, so that they coordinate well with existing systems or requirements within the town. We received one request from the fire department to have a proprietary item. It would be the fire alarm master box, because they work off a single system within the town, and it's a requirement for all properties that they serve. We also have five other items that are requested by the school department, and those items, we've provided justification to Mr. LaFond, outlining the existing systems that exist within the school district itself, and the need for these systems to be purchased, or these items to be purchased, so that we have integrated systems, and allow for convenience and cost savings with regard to future purchasing and services of the systems throughout the district. So the five, sorry, six items we're requesting, excuse me, is Arrow interchangeable seven-pin J K-way cores for the door hardware, Sigcom DTX fire alarm master box, Epson bright light interactive projectors. Those have used in all the classrooms. They'll be used with the interactive whiteboards. Red Cat light speed voice amplification systems, and those are the systems that are in each of the classrooms, will allow for the teacher to amplify their voice throughout the classroom, so that the children can hear better. Arrowhi wireless equipment, which is the wireless equipment used throughout the building, and the HP ProCurve network switches, which is the network switches which is used for the complete technology package within the building.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Just one thing, and it's probably not the right time to bring it up, but I, as town hall and the library, the heat and ventilation controls are the same, and I didn't know if we were gonna go proprietary, that you couldn't spec out the same. It, it was my vision to, in time, to get all the heating and cooling needs onto one master system, so that, you know, one person could oversee the whole thing. I just don't know if that's a possibility, that it has to be brought up now to be voted, or if it could be brought up at a later time. It might not even be possible, Mary. Probably should have, unfair question, but...
Well, we've talked about it, actually. There are two components that are required to be considered with regard to doing that. Number one is, in order to have that interconnection, you need to have somewhat of a robust wireless, sorry, network, computer network throughout the town. So your INET and your servers throughout all the town buildings would need to support that. And initial indications right now is that the INET, I loop network for the town really isn't capable right now of being able to do that. Some of the hope is that with the upgrade technology at the high school, we're gonna be putting in a more robust I-loop system, at least there, and then connecting into the town. We'll also probably have to talk to vendors with regard to how we would supplement or improve the existing system elsewhere. Secondly, is that you would need to have systems that are compatible with each other, and from initial indications, the system that's currently at the town hall and town library wouldn't necessarily be automatically compatible because of the age difference between the two. But certainly, there are patch panels that typically are provided to be able to give you some functionality in communicating, and then there's also the consideration that you could, or may be able to upgrade those two systems to tie into the new high school system. The high school system will have capability of not only servicing that building, but servicing that building through the network, through hardwire connections, and also through Wi-Fi or through telephone communications, if, if, if that's desired. That's all gonna have to do with the firewalls that are set up by the technology department at the school. But it will also have the capabilities to expand that system at, cost less than a full new system to be able to pick up other buildings within the town. So it is a system that is designed completely digital, completely computer-compatible network setup, so that you can expand throughout the town, throughout the town, and be able to connect various schools into that network.
No, I mean, it's just good, because of certain times, the software we've had for these buildings is outdated, and you can come in here in a given time, and it's running wild. So, you know, all your, all your efficiencies are kind of going out if you don't run it properly. So it was just a concern. As usual, you were on top of it.
Yeah, no, the, the systems that we're installing nowadays, they, you know, if your, your staff will buy in, it actually makes things a lot easier, because they can get a phone alarm at home, telling them that the temperature in a certain zone, is that not the right value, or the hot water systems aren't running right, and sometimes they can do it from home on the computer, and sometimes they need to come in, but it does create a more instantaneous response to any kind of incidents or issues.
Thank you. Maureen?
I see the Abington School Building Committee is CC'd on this. They're obviously on board with this?
Yes, we've talked to them about that. We've also been working, talking through the working sessions. It's taken probably close to a year to establish all of these items. Some of the items were originally discussed last summer when we were doing the feasibility study, and in more recent meetings with the fire department, and with the new technology IT director for the school department, we've added one or two more items.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I'd accept the motion unless there's more questions.
There's no special wording for this motion, is there?
I don't believe so.
I'll be happy to frame one for you, Mr. Coyle.
Why don't you do that?
If you could, motion would be perhaps to authorize that the project utilize proprietary items within, as defined in the May 26, 15 memo, to the town manager.
So moved. The motion by Mr. Coyle, seconded. Seconded by Mr. Jansen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get off easy tonight, Rich, just sit down.
Drive yourself a good deal.
Yes, this is true.
Smart move.
Thanks, you guys. Item three is annual reappointments.
Is there one sheet that, like, connects everything down? I see, I have that sheet too. Did I tell you who applied and?
It came, to answer your question, no. It was a glitch in our online application.
Aren't you in charge of that? Aren't you on that committee?
I did, I did, I made the call. We did square it away. I did catch it, but, yeah, we, we have to do some things like that. We get a lot of good ideas, and you are right, Kenny. But my intention was to go over, if you have this item number three in your packet?
Oh, yeah.
We would start with cultural council, cable advisory, conservation, then we go to, right down that list. And we will go over the applicants. Is that all right?
Yes, fun. Go to it.
So we'd start with cultural council. We have for reappointments, Maxine Barry, Beth Anderson, Godfrey, Elaine Nero, Carol Bates, and Lucy Furlong. They are all for reappointment? Right, that's what they, yeah, they're all for reappointment.
And there are any other applicants? We appoint Maxine Barry, Beth Anderson, Godfrey, Elaine Nero, Carolyn Bates, Lucy Furlong to the cultural council.
Okay, motion by Mr. Burbine.
A second that.
Seconded by Ms. Jansen. Further discussion? All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Cable advisor committee, we have three vacancies. I think we discussed it at one of our previous meetings, the need, whether we, whether we really needed to have this in place. I don't know if we ever reached a conclusion, but we should probably have that discussion at some point in time. And if we need it, we'll have to research for, for people that might want to serve. And maybe outline what the job description would be, too.
Right, it would be, probably if the cable license was due to expire, and it would be renewed, that's when they would come in.
Okay.
Just a question, at this point, there's nobody serving on that committee?
Nobody. Three vacancies.
Okay, and on the conservation commission, we have two vacancies. I think Dennis Bergen and who's the other gentleman?
Bill Stone, I think.
Bill Stone. And I know we have Cliff Jacobs. Cliff, would you like to come up and just say, introduce yourself if you don't mind?
Is that the only applicant we have for conservation?
I think Jim Tormy put down for zoning, either one, Jim?
I'm Cliff Jacob. I spent, I've lived in Holbrook for over 20 years, and I spent a lot of time in conservation and planning board. So I have a background in conservation. I kind of enjoyed it a lot. I'm not your average tree hugger, but I do have common sense, what, what is right and what is wrong. And I think I'd enjoy getting involved again in town politics. I grew up here in Abington. I was a large family for many years over here. It's not a part of Abington I don't know much about, so.
Thank you. Questions for Cliff?
Just to clarify, you were on the conservation commission in?
In Holbrook, yeah. I spent six years, almost six years on the board.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We did have two, there's nobody else that I see on this, and it was a little confusing for myself, I would admit, right? Dory, there was just, the only other applicant was Mr. Tormy, and he, he said that he selected two. So Jim, would you have an interest in the conservation? You don't, there is, there is an open seat. Yes. I don't know if that was clear or not.
There's two seats open, so.
That doesn't mean, even though there's an open seat, that doesn't mean you're gonna get it.
I know that. My name is Jim Tormy. I'm kind of a newcomer to town. I've only been here 32 years. I've never served on the conservation commission, but I feel that new blood never hurts, and I do have a willingness to learn and to work with the current commission, and I feel that it would be an honor to give my time back to the town, that they've served me so well.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from Jim? Nope. Okay, if not, I would accept the motion from the committee.
We'll reappoint Cliff Jacob and Jim Tormy to the conservation commission.
Motion by Mr. Burbine.
A second that.
Seconded by Maureen. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you for stepping up, and you do know you have to go get sworn in, and there is a thing, but, and she has a couple books. You should familiarize yourself with the open meeting, Lawrence, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have historical commission. We had...
You missed one, council on aging.
Oh, conservation, I'm sorry. Elizabeth Slinger, Lawrence Keough, and Elizabeth Keith have all, we had three, three openings and three people stepped up.
That's, this is, yes, three.
Reappointment.
Three vacancies, three are due to expire, and those three have requested reappointment.
Okay.
We'll reappoint Elizabeth Slinger, Lawrence Keough, and Elizabeth Keith, Keith, I'm sorry, to the council on aging.
A motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded. Seconded by Mr. Jansen. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Historical commission, we had one vacancy, but it was a little story. Is that the one Dennis put in for?
Yes, we had a request, and the historical commission requested that they interview the applicant, and then make a recommendation to you.
Okay, that's, I don't know if we've done that in the past, but...
There's one opening, and we have one applicant?
Correct.
Who was the applicant?
Dennis Bergen.
Oh, Dennis Bergen.
I make a motion, we, we appoint Dennis Bergen to the historical.
And I'll second that.
I mean, I, I agree with that. I, I think, we allowed that, we could allow it to all the commissions and boards, I guess.
It was her request.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'd like to honor it, but I think this is the proper way. Okay, so we have a, a motion by Mr. Coyle, seconded by Mr. Jansen. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Housing partnership, there's another one we discussed at a previous meeting. I guess that is necessary, but I don't know, again, I don't, I don't...
Mr. Chairman, can someone explain to me what the housing partnership is, related to the housing authority?
I'm with you.
The housing authority is an elected board, and what is a housing partnership?
Appointed, of course, by the selectmen, and we, I know, we did have a member that has been on there for many years, but it's, it's been so inactive that he came off the commission, so that's why that there's three vacancies. I probably, we could probably get you a better answer.
What, what do they do?
Nothing.
I thought it was 30...
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, essentially, the housing partnership, in my experience, works really with the state and as a, as a mediation with the, in an intermediate fashion with the town, to try and facilitate affordable housing within the community. But as Dory mentioned, we, I feel more comfortable getting you a broader definition than just taking that, but that's essentially what they, what they do in most towns.
So we have three vacancies and no applicants?
That's correct.
So we can readvertise it. Anybody who wants to be on the housing partnership?
Once we know what it is.
We'll announce that for us.
We know what it is.
That'll go up on the website, too.
Well, we should, I mean, I, I think in fairness to that one and the cable advisory, we should have some kind of a job description.
Yeah.
We're gonna put forward to it. So maybe that's something we could do at another meeting, so. Okay, so we'll move on to Sage. We have Lorraine Ryerson, Terry Mays, Shirley Dagne, and Sue Brennan, all for reappointment.
We appoint Lorraine Ryerson, Terry Mays, Shelley Vagwine, and Sue Brennan to Sage Committee.
And on that, there were only four openings? I thought there were five.
Yeah, I thought, I think you're right. Didn't the gentleman resign from that committee?
Yeah, it still leaves a vacancy.
So it still leaves a vacancy for that, okay. I'll second Andy's motion.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Jansen. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We have zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna step down for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Yeah, Mr. Haney, Jim Haney. Yeah, um, Mr. Haney, Jim Haney, will, is resigned or was willing to stay on. The gentleman's willing to stay on. Lisa Visanson for reappointment. John Shepherd for reappointment. And we had Joe Murray. He's here. And who's the other gentleman?
Richard Negrelli.
Rich Negrelli. Is it Rich here? Okay. Um, Joe, would you like to come up?
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming, can I, can I just ask, now, it, it says one vacancy. Does that mean that we're appointing three? I don't, I'm.
No, yeah, you're absolutely right. You're, you're appointing, um, all these positions for reappointment, in my view, are every three years, are just like us going up for reelection.
No, no, I realize that, but how many are we voting on? We have four names in front of us, correct?
Yep, John, Lisa, Joe, and Rich.
Right, so we're going to vote three members tonight.
And John, out of four. Three out of four, okay.
All right. Yep. Joe, please, I'm sorry.
Okay. We all organized? Um, Joe Murray, um, I've lived in Abington longer than Jim Tormy, so, fifty-nine years for me, if you can believe that one, but, um, I've had a little bit of experience serving in, uh, in the past on a board in Abington and, um, missed that opportunity to have some kind of impact in the town. Um, my current position, I do construction and development for a company and, um, part of what I do is to, um, meet with municipal boards such as ZBA and planning and CONCOM and, uh, make presentations on, on the behalf of our company. Um, so I've had some opportunity to sit in the room, um, on both sides, if you will, and, um, weigh in on different subjects in terms of zoning. Um, I think I can have a great impact on this board because of that experience. Um, I certainly understand a lot of the zoning bylaws from having to attend those meetings. And, um, I also think it's a good thing to maintain some volunteer position within the town, so I'd like that opportunity to, um, serve once again on a different capacity. Thank you for your consideration.
Yep, thank you. I don't know if, if you mentioned this, but Joe's a former member of the board of selectmen.
Well, it must have been a long time ago.
It was. It was ancient history.
Long time ago. You weren't even alive, Kenny. I could choose older than you. That's all.
Um, thank you. James Haney is not here. John Shepherd and Lisa are for reappointment. If you would like to come up and say something, not necessary because you are both up for reappointment, so, but it's up to you guys. You don't have to.
Actually, again, while he's on his way, can I ask you a question that maybe the board members know? It, there's three people on the board, but there's alternates. Is that, is that the way it works or is there?
Be best to speak to that.
I mean, how many people are actually on the board?
Five.
There's five members.
There's five members on the board.
Of which three are considered, uh, uh, I, I, I think the word is permanent and two alternates.
So.
Or associates would be another word for it.
So don't we just, when there's an opening, when a full member leaves, doesn't the associate move up? Is that the way that works or?
Well, who would be the associate? The next?
Oh, I don't, I don't.
The oldest associate, which would be in my case, me, if that were the case.
Okay, I, I'm.
But they all have, they all have voting rights. It's not as though you're just saying.
We all have the voting and usually the chairman picks the voter, the voting members at each particular, uh, hearing.
So three vote in each particular hearing.
Oh, is this the way all zoning boards work?
Uh, usually they have alternates, yeah. Um, I don't know if they call them alternates, but there's usually three that make the decision.
Right.
They actually consist of five people, but.
And those, and those three get chosen before, like deliberations or before the people come in?
Exactly.
Okay.
The chairman generally chooses who's going to sit on each particular panel.
Right.
I don't have much to say other than to say that this is the end of my third year here. It's been a huge learning curve when I first got on and I even bought the, uh, law book on planning and, other than being a big expense, it's vastly knowledgeable information and it's, I didn't realize how much legalese there is in this position. So having said that, I have gotten a pretty good knowledge and there's a lot more to learn. And I know this gentleman over here, Mr. Murray, uh, being in zoning and that before, I've gone in front of boards, but there's just a vast more knowledge that you really don't have unless you start reading these books. And even the local zoning laws that I've been, uh, come familiar with are just not quite the same level as the state level. And that's the experience that I've learned between the both of them. It's a huge learning curve and I still think there's a long way to go and I'd like to do it one more term at least. And, uh, that's about it. Any questions?
Thank, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Lisa, I don't know. You can say whatever you want now, Alex is out.
I'm Lisa Visanson and, uh, forgive me if I'm a little wordy here, but I'm very passionate about my zoning. So I wrote it down so I make sure I won't forget any, every, anything. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for considering my reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. And I believe it's important for residents to give back to their community and volunteer their expertise in our town. It's been a great pleasure serving with other dedicated volunteers on our town boards. And I'm here to ask for reappointment as I believe I have the professional background, education, and experience to continue to serve our residents in a fair and respectable manner. I'm currently the vice chair of the zoning board of appeals. I have three college degrees, one in business management, another one in architectural technology. I'm a licensed realtor and I also hold a, uh, construction supervisor's license with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which more commonly known as a builder's license. With these licenses and professional training, I'm currently the only zoning board member qualified to read and properly interpret site plans and building construction plans. I believe it's important to sure, ensure that the town's interests are protected by board members with such a background. Um, as you just said, I, I had written some things that I wanted to clear up. I've heard some misconceptions. The, uh, zoning board of appeals is comprised of five members, three of which are full, three, three of which are full voting members and two alternate members. Currently, the chairman selects any three of the five members to vote on applications before the board. A motion to approve an application must be unanimous vote of three. However, a denial only takes one vote of three. Our town is made up of many, many undersized and non-conforming lots that were divided up long before the current zoning bylaws were put into effect. Therefore, many residents and property owners find themselves in need of appearing before the zoning board of appeals before they can do things like, uh, build in addition to their home, expand their wooden deck, or construct a new garage. Um, in many cases, neighbors appear at the hearing to support the petition of the applicant and the variance if special permit is granted with whatever conditions or restrictions we deem appropriate. In some cases, it's up to the zoning board to deny an application or instead urge an applicant to withdraw their application and go back to the drawing board and to possibly return with a better, simpler, or smaller proposal. Many of the zoning applications which come before us are crucial and critical to whether a family can actually remain in their home since they may need the zoning board to vote to allow a new bedroom to be built for an elderly parent or a driveway, uh, to be widened for additional family cars, um, and such. We need to know when it's reasonable to grant a variance to allow a new business to invest or expand in Abington while also remaining firm and not allowing a business to ignore the purpose and intent of our bylaws. Although any one of the voting members may vote no and thus flat out deny a petition, I think it more responsible and respectable if we instead seek to work with applicants and neighbors to work toward a mutually beneficial resolution, if such a resolution is possible. I believe that my professional experience and as education has greatly assisted the board in several circumstances and the property rights and property values of both the applicant and the abutters have been respected, if not improved. I also think it's critical that public boards maintain a mix of new members and experienced members as experience and historical knowledge is extremely important for the continuity and smooth operation of our town. Um, the board, as, as you discussed, has, um, two members with three years or less experience and our longtime chairman has announced his retirement. I believe my continued service and experience on the board will be a great benefit to our town. I believe the decisions of the zoning board will be respected if the members of the zoning board think, vote, and act in a respectable manner. And I ask the board of selectmen to reappoint me to the zoning board so that I can continue to represent the town in such a manner. It's an honor and a privilege to serve my town and its residents and I ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions?
I just have a question, not, not for Lisa, but for, uh, do we hear back from Mr. Richard Negrelli to see if he, did he let us know he wasn't going to be able to make it or?
He was, he was informed of the date of meeting.
He was informed, okay.
Yeah, he was informed.
Good, now, and then, now, and Felisa, how long have you been on this?
Uh, you know, I think it's twelve years.
Okay, wow. Kudos.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Felisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess I'd accept. We'll go one at a time for a person or how does the board want to do it?
I will just make a motion that we appoint, that the three people that are here tonight.
Uh, I, well, I mean, I can do it individually if you want.
I would rather do it individual, yes.
Sure.
Okay. In that case, I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, to, to appoint, uh, reappoint John Shepherd.
A motion by Mr. Coyle.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Maureen. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed? That's unanimous. And I can make a motion to appoint Mr. Murray.
I'll second that also.
So, um, motion haven't been seconded? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Motion to appoint Lisa Visanson?
I'll second that.
Um, you know, I, in all due respect to Lisa, I, I kind of have a problem with somebody that's elected to the housing authority and sitting on the board of appeals. You know, I mean, I just feel strongly, I don't know what happened to Richard Negrelli, but I will tell you this, that it, um, it died, there was a lot of confusion in this whole thing. I don't know how many phone calls we had to make back and forth to get the different applicants and the, accept it online and stuff, so, um, I would, that's just my, my viewpoint. I certainly have no problem if Lisa goes back on, but I feel strongly, and I have stated that, that, you know, kind of get new people involved, um, that, that's the whole issue of getting, but with all due respect, the experience is something you certainly have to look at, but, um, that's just my viewpoint. Again, it's having like, you know, can, you have one person in a position, the zoning board certainly does a lot of work, a lot of power, but so does the housing commission, so you have the same person holding two positions.
If I may, the housing authority, um, is under the control of Pam Murphy and it's, um, their scope is subsidized housing in Abington and it's totally separate from the zoning board of appeals. They would never come before the zoning board of appeals.
I, I don't think I'm necessarily saying that, Lisa. I'm just saying it, it's just, um, you know, I, I guess neither with the board of selectmen or, or whatever, it's just kind of like two positions. If, if, if it was, if it was a position and then like the, um, school building committee or the sage committee, but it's kind of like, you know, it's an elected board. And that's just my viewpoint and, um, but I don't know what the committee feels.
And I, I agree with him. I got, especially if you have another individual who is interested in this position. If it wasn't, and if it was just three of them and Lisa was serving on the housing authority and wanted to go back on the, uh, the zoning board, I, you know, I guess, that would give me more of a reason to, to consider putting her back on, but I think the fact that there is somebody else out there who was interested and from what I, and I've spoken to Rich, I spoke to him a few weeks ago.
I know he, that's a, a kind of way.
And he, from my understanding, he tried to put in an application last year through the system online and it didn't go through, so it's not as though he hasn't been interested previously, so.
But to Kenny's point, you, you know, we do ask for the people to come here.
Yep.
I, I do appreciate.
And, and to the other point too, I, I'm an elected official and I'm appointed on the historical commission too, so it's not like, you know.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't think you can put the zoning board of appeals and historical commission on the same wavelength.
Really? You're, you're dissing the historical commission?
That you want is pretty historical. Um, what do you want to do?
And the other thing is, um, if I, the other thing is, and I appreciate the fact you've been there at least twelve years, Lisa, that.
I actually think it's kind of loud. I talk about it.
And that's a long time, but I'm, well, I'm, no, but I'm, I'm a, I'm a big believer in, you know, term limits and new people getting involved and, um, and eleven years is a long time. It's, it's sometimes good to have some new folks in with some new perspective.
Cliff, Nancy, please.
Do you have any people that are holding two positions and just can't?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't doubt that. I mean, I've, I've been on, uh, three hundred and fiftieth, the tricentennial, and the school building committee. I'm just saying, these are positions that are higher in value. You know what I mean? There's a, there's a certain thing where, not, not to, not to put anything on, on the importance of it, but zoning board of appeals certainly has a lot of, that, that's my, my conservation, um, planning boards, uh, they have, they have a lot more say, what else, so to speak, but, all right.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, um, if you were on the three hundred and fiftieth committee, congratulations and if you do make it that, that far, but, um, I wish I had a, I wish I had a tough decision to make tonight, but I don't. If Mr. Negrelli had got word to us that he couldn't make it because there was a, a problem or, um, he was, uh, he pretended to work or there was another commitment, but I, I'm sorry, you know, they, they made an effort to come up here, they got to the microphone in front of the camera, in front of everybody, and, and spoke their, their peace of mind, so that's why I made that motion.
You know, it's two different boards and it really is in two different areas. A zoning board or a planning board would die to have somebody that can re-plan and look at a situation and explain it out to the other members. I think it's a no-brainer to put her back where she belongs. And, um, because most, most people are volunteers and they don't know what they're looking at when they look at blueprints. I've watched it in the past. They have no idea what they're looking at. I mean, I said we would do a print when I was in high school and fatted me much, but, um, this, you know, this is a no-brainer. I understand your feelings, but, you know, maybe when it comes up for the housing job, maybe that's.
Oh, that's elected.
That's elected. Maybe that's something that she might want to give up then. Don't, don't punish, um, people on the zoning board.
I'm not trying, Cliff, please. I'm not trying to punish anybody.
It's, it's just a difference of opinion as to.
I understand that word, but don't take her away from a boy that really needs her. Because you could end up finding yourself capable of an engineer, but being helping that boy.
True. That's true. All right, it's up to the committee.
Well, there was a motion. I was.
Motion, second.
Director, I, I made the motion.
I second it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Coyle, seconded by Ms. Jansen.
Close enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So, now what?
Ah... I did not know, and I don't know, and I wish... I think you have some valid points. I will tell you that Jim Tormy, I wish I hadn't said to go to the Conservation Commission because that was, I thought, would have solved my problems, obviously maybe not would have solved yours, and probably still end up a tutu.
No, it may have been different, but it's a moot point.
Right. So, want to put it off? Find out what's this Rich Negrelli content was and...
Negrelli.
Negrelli.
What happens if... There's no...
Well, if he said that, I think all we need to do is reappoint Lisa, in fairness, that would be the right thing to do.
Then do it.
I don't know why this gentleman isn't here. All I do know, and you can attest to this, there was a lot of going back and forth with the website being messed up. I think Jim called me last night, is meeting tonight, and there was a lot of confusion over the whole thing. And I don't know if that entered into it. Maybe he doesn't want the seat. Because if he didn't know about it and didn't show up...
I mean, he knew it was posted.
Right, I know, but believe me when I tell you, I think both of you guys can attest to putting in applications and not having them, and they were sent and I checked with Dory and I didn't receive them, and there was a lot of that. So, I would just... Again, it's up to the board. You want to wait on that?
We've already put it off once. We've already put this vote off once. We were supposed to do it at the last meeting, I believe.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. We have had problems with this.
First meeting in June is when we're supposed to do it. That's the first meeting in June.
Yeah, it was on the agenda and we decided that it was way too soon. It was on the agenda right after the election.
Yeah, we had a policy that it was supposed to be the first meeting in June, which we weren't following, so that's why it's on this one.
What is the result of a split vote?
It doesn't go anywhere. My suggestion would be to wait and then if this Rich Negrelli wants to come to the meeting and we can revote it or if...
Well, I can tell you personally, my vote will stay the same now.
That's fine.
Because I've already made the vote, so it's going to be a split vote then too.
That's fine.
Well, I would assume. Sorry.
I don't know him. I don't know him. I haven't heard from him.
I'm just kind of leaving the door open that it was an honest mistake. That's all.
We'll meet again on Monday.
I mean, I'd be willing to... I don't know the guy, so I would be willing to hear from him.
Give him the opportunity to come in on the 8th.
But right as things stand now, I mean, I'm...
Because I also believe that he was the person that the application wasn't accepted because he had spoken to me and I checked on that and wasn't accepted, and he reapplied. So, that to me tells me something.
Let's open the whole thing up again and invite anybody else that wants to do it.
We've already made it.
Have we sent the votes that we just took tonight?
No, that wouldn't make any sense.
No, but a lot of things don't make sense.
All right, so my suggestion would be to put it up Monday night. Rich, for whatever reason, just is not interested, that releases. If you don't want to do that, we can just leave it a tie forever.
No, you need to fill the...
That doesn't do anything.
I know. I agree with you. Give him the opportunity to come in on Monday night.
Right. I know Kenny doesn't agree with that. Maureen, you're going to be the deciding person.
Great.
Well, actually, I think it's in your hands, the other chairman. It's a side vote, so there's nothing that's going to happen.
I'd rather leave it in Maureen's. I'd suggest that we wait, Monday night, we look at it.
I agree.
You're the chairman.
All right.
Until then, Lisa, you're still on until... If nothing happens, then you'd be on again at a reappointment, and if something does, then... But up until then, if there's...
And I will say, Lisa, that I do not know this gentleman at all. We should be looked at as far as what his qualifications is and his ideas, and then we can kind of go from there.
I'm just wondering how everybody else sort of well-being is by...
I don't know. Let me just say this to you. I had personally, as chairman, a lot of phone calls and a lot of... Not a lot, but emails back and forth trying to resolve some issues with the website not accepting applications. The two gentlemen sitting right in front of you can tell you this, and we got it squared away. Mr. Tormy did call me up last night because he thought the meeting was Monday night. I can't answer that. I just know that Mr. the gentleman here, Negrelli, had applied, just like Joe Murray and Jim Tormy, thought his application was in the hands of the town. And yet, when we checked on him, it wasn't. They weren't there because of a glitch. So, given that, the point, I'm just leaving the door open that maybe the same thing held true.
Mr. Chairman, we want to just wait on the vote for Monday because it appears that everybody, if you wanted to have... Kenny mentioned rescinding the votes on them.
I'm not going to rescind my vote, Joe. I already am very comfortable with the votes I've made so far, so I don't know how the others feel.
So am I. I'm fine with that. Yeah, I think it's just between and I'm... All right, so we'll do that. Monday... Lisa, can you make Monday night?
No, she...
You probably don't have to make it. You put the app in. I think that the issue that I have is whether this guy was comfortably notified and knew about the meeting.
I just... I can confirm that, that when I received his application, I notified him of the date of the meeting, and he emailed me today and asked if I had received it, and I said yes, and I reconfirmed the date of the meeting. I don't know other than that.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But I didn't receive the application, I think, until Friday perhaps.
But he had, again, was the person that had put it in thinking that it was accepted, and just like these two gentlemen, they had done the same thing and it wasn't accepted.
Right, it was a broken link.
Right.
And that didn't come through, and Mr. Murray's didn't come through. So, there was a lot of lateness in this.
Right, right.
Over Friday, over the weekend, coming in notification at the last minute, absolutely.
Okay. So, that's where we're at with it. Monday night. Lisa, you can, if you want to come in, that's fine.
Absolutely. As far as making the presentation, I don't think you need to do that again.
No, it was once was enough.
Yeah, no, it was very well done, actually.
You did very well. Much better than your husband. All right, so Monday night. Sorry, let's go from there. Okay.
Are we here Monday night or...
Yeah, we've got a bunch to explain where that is. Monday night is at...
Is at the high school. That's correct. And that would be... What time are we going to meet before town meeting?
Six o'clock.
Let's give this a little bit of time, okay? Because, I mean, we were putting people off with, we thought we were going to have a quick executive session, and so quarter past six, say?
Quarter past six, yes.
Okay. So, quarter past six at the high school. I don't know which room.
Yeah, we have a classroom. I don't know the number.
We never know.
Be on the first floor there.
Okay. And let me say this. If Rich determines that he didn't want the position, that it wasn't, then why don't we notify Lisa or we'll just come up and make the vote?
Yeah.
All right? That's fair. Thank you. We have... Well, that's it. Thank God. Recommendation of the special, an annual town meeting warrants, June 8, 2015.
We want to tell Alex to come back?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Left to go get a coffee.
Maybe if you hurry, he'll miss this entirely and...
Thank you for volunteering, folks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, does everybody have their warrants in front of them?
Yes.
How do you want to do this, Rick?
As you can see in the warrants you have, the Finance Committee recommendations are included. On the special, the only article that doesn't have a recommendation is the article... I'm sorry. Article eight, which is the end-of-year transfers. I've given you a draft of that for you tonight, but I'm not asking for action on that. There may be one other... We believe our legal bill is going to be close but successful and within budget again this year, so that's just an illustration right now. The Finance Committee will be also looking at this before town meeting, at their meeting, just to take a vote on the recommended line item transfers. But I don't know if you... I don't know historically. I know it's varied a bit. I don't know if the board wishes to go through each article and make a recommendation or if...
That's what we've done in the past, is we have summarized, I think, in the past. Obviously, we don't want to read every one, but I... Why don't we just... Why don't you just go through it? If, I don't know, if you want to take a vote on each one or do you want to just...
I think we've all had a chance to...
Yeah.
...read this the last several weeks, unless there's any surprises in here, Rick.
No, there's been no changes to, obviously, to your warrant. There's been no changes to it. The only issue I would suggest is on the annual. It's not an issue that's of the Finance Committee. Subsequent to your review has voted to approve the recommended budget that we discussed at your last meeting.
The one last week.
Under the budget article. Other than that...
And the only other thing is, planning is going to...
Yes, we were notified today that planning...
Passover.
Is going to withdraw the Southfield rezoning article.
Oh.
Or they're going to request to be passed over at town meeting.
So, if nothing else has changed.
I still want to bring up Article six of the special.
What is that, Kenny?
The Flag Day weekend that I'm on the committee floor.
Oh, that's right. We were going to give some clarification.
I just don't like the word celebration. I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for celebrations. So, I know it sounds picky, but...
And there is a very thorough memo of explanation attached.
I know. I just don't like the wording. I don't like celebration. I mean, I like to celebrate, but I don't like... I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for celebration. That's all.
I get your point.
It's more, if it's more for the light poles and different things, I realize that. I just wish the wording would be changed. I don't know, we probably can't change the wording, but that's all. I just want to make sure, you know, get my point across.
You want to try to change the wording? I think you could probably change the wording.
On the floor, I'm actually...
Yeah, I think the gist of the whole thing is for the people of Abington, and they have, this committee has put a lot of work together and...
I haven't really done much on it.
Huh?
No. Yes, they have.
Okay, so you want to say to negate that, vote against it or what?
I would make a recommendation that we strike the word "in celebration."
I could go along with that.
That's all.
Seeing how it's our article, we might as well make that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I do think you'd have to make it, would accept it here and would have to make it on the floor.
Yeah, you would.
We can ensure the motion doesn't include that language if you'd like.
There you go.
I would like that.
Okay. Everybody all right with that?
I just don't like it anyway.
Just for everybody watching, if you want to explain what the $5,000 is actually going to go for.
Why don't you do it, Mr. Burbine?
Okay. According to Mr. Alwick, $3,000 to get a temporary power service out to the Old Stone Bandstand on the point with the hope that that will become permanent. $1,500 for audio equipment and the required installer operator to run it for the unveiling ceremony, not celebration.
Perfect.
And $500 for miscellaneous expenses appropriate for the day, flags, bunting, signage, et cetera.
Okay. That's fine.
Can it say, can the sum of up to? Can we do that? Or do they put $5,000 into an account or how does it work?
Yep.
They submit bills, right?
And just to go a little bit on that there, I can't emphasize enough, it's going to be a big day. They're going to have a Civil War reenactment. They're talking about having a town-wide picnic on the Grove and to go along with these other events. So, there is a lot of activities and, you know, hopefully that will help make it a little bit more meaningful is what I would say.
For the National Historic Commission.
Yes. Which you are on there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, up to...
That's the only one we have. We're going to change that, Rick. Do we have to do that in the floor town meeting?
I will. Well, the motion that after tomorrow will be, actually tomorrow, we'll be preparing actual motions, so I will, with your input, not include the word "celebration" in the motion that's presented at town meeting.
And if possible, up to $5,000.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's fair.
Some of up to...
I don't know how the former moderators on the panel up here may feel about that, but if there's no...
It's fine.
They'll be happy to put that in the motion.
That's all.
We've done that before.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah. Up to...
Okay, so we go to the, move along to the annual town meeting. I don't know...
So, just on the rest of them, we're going to vote to recommend on all the other articles in the annual, I mean, in the special, right?
Right.
And the only thing I would ask that you make the exception to Article eight, again, because that's also pending the Finance Committee's final review of the recommended transfers, of which, again, you have a draft in front of you. But they haven't specifically voted either, so on this specific line item transfer document. But again, if you choose to, that's fine, but...
But those numbers solid or are they still fluid?
Well, the only, as I mentioned, the only thing that may be added is if some small additional expense to the legal line item, but I believe, talking to the town accountant this week, that we should... It's looking relatively good. And if we do have a, go over a bit, as you know, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, up to a certain date in July, does have the ability to make end-of-year transfers of a certain amount anyway. So, I think we should be okay. But that's the only thing, Mr. Coyle, that I would suggest is subject to any change here.
Now, these are increased expenses from what we budgeted, right? Veterans benefits, is that because we budgeted low, because we...
We did budget a little bit lower, and the good news is that the expense actually is trending much lower than it had the last couple of years, but there's still a little bit left. The veteran salaries is over a little bit because of the, really more of a technicality in terms of how we framed our agreement with Whitman. Next year, we've got it arranged that the budget is higher by being offset by the intermunicipal agreement coming in an estimated receipt. So, that's somewhat more of a technicality that we're being, that with the adjustment. IT salaries is the increase for the IT director, as you full well know, that that was a conditions of employment that he has satisfied. And the property liability insurance is our, actually also includes workers' compensation and even the budget is pretty close, but we have had some additional deductibles this year that we didn't expect on a couple of issues. And as you can see, the rest are extremely minor. The selectmen's expense, this is the only explanation there, is that has been deemed an appropriate place to move some funds to do another, one more cutting before the end of the year of Griffin's Dairy. There really, there isn't a budget for Griffin's Dairy. And the chairman of that committee is advising strongly that we do one more cutting before the end of this fiscal year. So, that is all that's designed for.
What is the purpose of cutting? Is it for hay purposes or just ultimately hay?
I am not an agricultural expert, but I'm told that it will take at least three to five cuttings to be, for the growth there, to be suitable for hay.
So, to prepare for hay in the future.
Because it hasn't been done in so long, so they need to go through a couple of seasons.
So, there was one cutting...
Mr. Green Jeans, thank you.
This is attempt to have another subsequent...
But we, it, I'm very anxious to get back what the planning council has in mind, because we really don't even have an applicant for the hay just yet, do we?
We don't, that would be something, once we have a product that we can, that we can, I guess, sell, we could, we would, in theory, be doing an RFP or a bid, depending on how much value that may have.
Right, and I don't personally think there's a lot of value in the...
Probably, probably not, and I think, as, as you know, part of the, the goal is to, is to help facilitate a longer-term agricultural use of some, for the, really more for aesthetics and quality of life, but for the foreseeable future.
Okay, move on, please.
Do we want to vote, just those articles for the special first?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
I'll make that motion with the changes in Article, Article 6, and then hold off on Article 8 for now.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Coyle, seconded by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Okay, so now we got that.
Now we do the annual.
All right, Mr. Lefond?
Article 1 is the so-called budget article, and that document is the same document you saw at your last meeting, and that is also attached at the end of this package, and the, this is the same, this is the, the Finance Committee has, is recommending approval of that, that budget also. And again, it is the exact budget you saw in your last meeting.
Rick, if you want to just run through them, and then if a member has objections, we'll...
Well, but as far as the budget goes, we are borrowing from stabilization again for this budget, no?
No, the only thing that...
All in free cash, right?
There's no, the only thing that's, is, in this, that is, I guess, what you'd call a little speculative, is the funding of our snow deficit is in the, is about $400,000, and there's still about $400,000 outstanding pending some FEMA reimbursement. We don't know exactly how much that's going to be, it's, we have every reason to believe it's certainly not going to be the full 400, but it may be as high as half of that. So the goal is to, is to defer the balance and, and pay that off in the fall, or at the next special town meeting with free cash. But we don't know exactly what that's going to be at this point, it would be seen premature. But to the extent that there's any use of one-time funds, you could conceptually argue that not paying that down entirely is essentially floating ourselves a loan, an interest-free loan. But at the special town meeting, as you well aware, we are restoring the stabilization funds that were utilized last year, and there is no use of stabilization in this budget whatsoever.
That's a good thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, the school department is on board with their number at this point, also?
Yes, they are, yes.
There's been some talk about, I think that some people might be seeking extra funding for extra school teachers up at Beaver Brook, is that...
Well, one of, one of the proposal, one of the, the items that's contained within the school budget is, they have it, as you, a number of retirements, but some of, which, some of those savings are offsetting the projected increase, but they're a little less, because what they're doing is, than they could be, because they're shifting some resources to include one more elementary school teacher. And I believe that the school committee was advocating for, to keep that in their budget, that additional elementary school teacher. And that is what is in their budget, that's what's in the budget number I'm recommending, and that Peter Schaefer is recommending. So, so based upon some of the information I've seen, which I'm sure is the same as yours, the proponents of lowering class size in the elementary schools should be pleased by this budget. Would you like me to just summarize them quickly, Mr. Chairman, and then, or completely how you want?
Yeah, just, just run through them, and that's been our history in the past, at this stage in the ballgame, I just assumed the whole thing. But I think there are a couple of things that the members might want to debate.
Fair enough. I'm not going to, you know, the Finance Committee recommendations stand for themselves, so I'm just going to summarize the articles a few. Article 2 is, is requested increase by the town clerk for, to increase her salary, and as you know, as the only elected official in town, a single elected official, that has to be done through a town meeting vote, so. Article 3 is the...
I want to stop you on Article 2. Would it be possible to get some backup data on what that position has received for raises in the last few years? Because I recall that every year, I know last year was 3%, and I believe before that, before the previous, the previous town clerk received a substantial raise before she left the position. I think, maybe I'm wrong, but if I recall. So it might be good to have this information in case an issue happens.
I think she went, the prior town clerk went a number of years without, and then I think we brought her up, and then she left.
Yes.
And then I think the, the current town clerk took that position, so.
We'd be happy to go back maybe five years and provide you that information.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, I think.
Get us, get a, get a sense of...
The Finance Committee may already have that, and we'll speak to it, but I just want to make sure that...
I think it would be good to have.
Yes, thank you. Okay, sorry. I'm not going to interrupt you on every article.
No, no problem.
Probably.
Article 3 is the recommended capital expenditure items for the, for the year.
And these are the ones that we're, we're intending to fund?
The, that is correct, and the, as you know, the, see the right-hand column is the proposed funding sources for...
The source, yeah, mostly water.
Yeah.
We have a capital improvement plan, per se, that...
Yes, we have a capital plan, yes.
Okay.
That's kind of where I was going with that, because we have, there are more things we would like to do, these are the things we think that we can...
Right, as you can see, most of these are not, obviously not general fund, funding sources.
Right.
Simply because of the, the issues with funding, a snow overgraph this year is are obviously, eat into any ability to fund capital out of the, out of general fund. We're hoping in the fall we'll be able to do that. And again, two of the items specifically, you know, the police cruisers, and, you know, the radio system for the highway department, those are the two issues that are, would have been general fund appropriations that are at this point not being recommended, and are not on here for that purpose. Article 4 is the reauthorization of the various revolving funds. Article 5 is, is a proposed updated personnel bylaw.
If issues come up with that at the town meeting, who's going to speak upon that? Will that be you, Rick?
I'd be happy to, yes.
I'm just, I know this is town manager, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Because if you don't, I wouldn't.
You're happy not, you're happy not to, I guess, we'll take you off the script that evening. Article 6 is the, will be the proposed changes to the, updates to the charter by the Charter Review Committee.
Is there going to be a handout on that?
Yes.
It's going to be here.
Article 7 is the Community Preservation Act, request for adoption by petition.
Excuse me, one second, before we get into that. We, the school committee notified me that they can't make Monday night, the way our bylaws written now, we did try to change it last year, but we weren't successful, it will be changed, is that the existing members, so it means like, if one of the members of the Water Commission couldn't have come tonight, we couldn't have voted that in. And the same thing holds true for the school committee, so they had a problem getting members at Monday's meeting. I suggested, it was my opinion, that it was an important enough process where we should have it here instead of at the school before town meeting, so we could ask questions. And then I did, I did offer to have it at 8:00, you know, tonight, but there was legitimate concerns, whether or not the bylaw was in place, I would have honored that, because there was legitimate concerns, they wanted to be here. They have suggested next Tuesday, I believe, Dory, I don't know if you've got that, but I think it's next Tuesday, which is the night after town meeting, and I think the problem I have is, I should have checked with Sean to see if there's a continuation of town meeting, if it would be Tuesday or Wednesday, you know, because it could be that, and I haven't done that, so. But right now, having said that, I would like to pull you people and see if you're available for next Tuesday.
I'll be there.
Yes?
I think, I think I have something, but it might be just during the day, I have to...
Can you let me know, because I'm, I'll check with Ellen, and then I'll also have a, a little bit of a problem, as to how we would vote that, because, and Rick's going to get a legal opinion to get me off the hook. The way it was posted was, it was posted for two seats on the school committee, one for a two-year and one for one-year, and when the applications came in, they all applied for the open seats in the school committee. All right, that's fine. So now how do you provide the vote? Because if you went in the ballot box and you had two seats open, and three people running, you'd vote for two. So at the meeting, would you say, okay, we're going to vote for two? And the other way you could do it is, you could say, okay, ask the people if they prefer an open seat, understanding that each candidate has to run in a year anyways, but we don't know which candidate is going to be into which position.
Can't we usually make the decision, they're, they're all serving from the day we appoint them until the town election, I mean...
Correct.
So it really doesn't matter?
It, it matters on how you conduct the vote. If you went to the ballot box and you had a candidate running for a two-year seat, and then you'd have candidates that applied for the one-year seat, okay, and so you'd differentiate, you couldn't have it. But if you went in for three, you have, you have just two seats open, and three people running, you'd vote for two, you wouldn't poll. You wouldn't, you wouldn't say, okay, let's, everybody vote for this one, everybody vote for that one. You're just, do two.
How many people put their names in?
Three.
Three for two, okay.
Three for two. Just to catch 22, I just want to make sure that, and again, you know...
We've done it before, we've had four or five people running for two or three, you know, put their names in, and whoever gets the most votes.
I don't really remember having them all run for two, two separate, they were two separate, they were combined. They listed two seats open, they listed one for one year and one for two, but the applications came in, three applications.
Technically, they're both for one, yeah.
Not even, not even a year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it really doesn't matter how we do it.
Because they could, they could conceivably, if you appointed them to one particular spot, they could say, I'm not going to run for that one particular spot, I'm going to run for the other particular spot come April, so I think...
I just don't want there to be...
You're not locked into that, just because you got appointed.
I don't want there to be anything said that it wasn't done fairly, so that's why I did ask, Rick, just to clear that up with town council.
Well, if we can't meet next Tuesday, when does the school committee meet next? And could we go in on their meeting, to do it, or does it have to be?
If we, here's a problem, Alex, what we had before, is if it exceeds a certain, we had, we have to advertise it by the bylaw, by the charter, so many days, and then we have so many days to fill it. So once we exceed those days to fill it, it has to be reposted on again.
When's the deadline?
It would be June, as long as it's done before June 18th.
Before June 18th, so...
And it isn't, it isn't imperative that we have a quorum, it's imperative that they have, not a quorum, all the remaining members, that's, that's the problem. One could be legitimately sick, or, I think the issue I had is, it does throw a wrench into the list.
Get to have all of them, or the majority?
No.
No, it does, have them a quorum, right?
It's the, the charter says the remaining members.
I thought it was a quorum of, a quorum of the remaining members.
It doesn't say quorum, I know it doesn't say quorum, but...
It says, I don't have it.
Majority of the remaining.
The way we've worked it before is if...
You got the charter?
I have.
Bylaw?
Yeah.
I mean, you can look that up and go...
Because if there was four members, they'd have to have three people there.
Right.
They don't have to have all four.
It says remaining members, I'm 99% certain, we'll see.
The Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the board or committee.
Remaining members.
Has experienced the vacancy.
And when I tried to change that to the members in attendance last year, so that somebody could be sick, because the way it is now, a member didn't...
You were right, I was...
That should be changed at town meeting, then.
We tried last year, and they...
It's in here this year.
It's in the new, it's in the new charter.
It's in the new charter, yeah.
Granted, it'll take a year for that to formally take effect.
Yes, we still could be voting on this. Okay, so as far as we know, if you guys just check your calendar and get back to me, I'll call Ellen, and we'll see if we can...
Okay.
Okay. And if you're not, we'll just have to schedule something else with them. All right, thank you, sorry for the interruption. Article 7, I think you are.
If it's June 9th, it's almost 6:30.
Um, so yeah, Article, Article 7 was the adoption of the Community Preservation Act for the, for next year's ballot.
Do we know what their vote was, by any chance?
The Finance Committee's vote was 3 to 3. They, it was again, failure to approve by...
Wow, so they could theoretically revote it before, if they were full board, right? They could theoretically revote it?
They could.
Before town meeting?
They will.
They won't?
I don't know, they could, but...
I'm, I don't know about what the board wants to do on that, support it or not support it.
Are we going to take votes on each one of these, or are we going to, are we going to just look for a whole thing when we're done?
We can vote what we've gone over so far, if you want to do it like that, because I don't think it's any contention.
I'm sure there's going to be some debate on it.
So I'll accept the motion that, as, as the Finance Committee's approval, would agree with the Finance Committee on everyone.
On Article 1 through 6.
1 through 6, correct.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Coyle.
Okay.
All opposed, it's getting late.
Maureen had a question. No, I would, I would have seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Good.
Okay, so we're on Article 7, we approved the first six. I don't know what the committee deals in this. I, I did want to support this last year, I did not put it on, because I didn't want to affect the school vote at all. But I do think in my, and I just, I'm not trying to sweep anything under the rug, we have some needs in this town that do have to be addressed, that can be addressed by this money. And if somebody's going to give me money, if I need to do like work on the bridge, Island Grove Bridge, and I say, okay, I'll give you a dollar, and they'll say, well, I'll give you 25 cents, or whatever it is, 15 cents, to me, that's smart money, and not sweeping it under the rug. I look, I look at this town, just like my own property, there's a lot of things I want, my own property, but I can't do it. But I also know that if I maintain my property, and I can do certain things, and make it more valuable, it's, when I go to selling, it's going to be, I think our town is the same way, the more amenities we have for people, the better we keep our town, the more people want to move here. And this is just an opportunity for me, not, not, I mean, I've always been kind of brought up, like, if I can save the money, I don't like to borrow money, if I can avoid it. If I can, but not only that, if we're saving the money, and somebody's giving us money on top of it, so that's it. I'm, I'm for it, and I know there's people on this board that don't agree with that.
Similar to a 401K, or whatever, I mean, your employer's matching
Right.
A certain percentage. And if we had done this years ago, we probably could have paid for a lot of projects, a lot of things that we've done. We are paying, every time someone sells a house, there's a tax being assessed there, and we're not getting any of it. It's going up to all the other cities and towns around us. So we should get our fair share. And it amounts to about, I think, Mr. Buckley said about $12 a quarter?
I think he did say that, yeah.
So, you know, your $3 or $4 a month, who would not want to invest $3 or $4 a month into a savings account, if it's going to be matched by a certain percentage with the state?
Probably the person that's paying an extra $600 a year for taxes for a new school.
And you know what, if we had done this a long time ago, we wouldn't have been paying for these other things that we tax the people for either.
You aren't paying for them, Alex, because you're paying for them for increased taxes.
And we're, we're paying this on the properties that are being sold now, and we're not getting any benefit out of it. There, there's two parts to this. There's one that the town would assess, and there's one at the Registry of Deeds, that we're paying now, and we're not getting anything out of it.
We're not paying, each individual who sells their property
That's right.
Pays $4.56 per thousand.
I think that goes, that goes into the pool.
The state gives a portion of that back
Yeah, that goes in...
To the Community Preservation Act.
That's right.
But there's also contingencies on that. If you don't have the 3%, which is the highest you can go, you're not going to get the first round of matching grants. And I did this last year.
And they haven't know what the grant, what they're going to come up with.
They've been decreasing, actually, over the last number of years, but, only times that it's adopted, 3% surcharge are eligible to receive full grants. Only 73 of the 155 communities that have accepted the Community Preservation Act are at 3%. So those communities share in the greater piece of the pie. And then round two comes down to people who are under 3%. And I understand, like, you know, if it's 15 cents on the dollar, or a 10 cent, it's something, but as Kenny said, it's, it is an increase in taxes.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I can...
And the other thing is, you're tying yourself, and we pass debt exclusions for big projects
Should we have?
Quite often. But we're tying ourselves in, if you pass this, you're tying yourself into only using this money for certain things.
I thought that's, that those three things was 10%, it was a total 30, but...
But it's certain things.
No, I, I agree.
You couldn't buy a new fire truck, you couldn't buy
No.
Police cruisers, you couldn't, so we'd still have to be purchasing those things.
But I'm, I'm just looking at overall, Doug Alwak came in the other day, and some ideas of, we're considering a second means of egress from the high school, and perhaps a walking gated emergency access. Some of those things could be done with these monies. And we're going to spend, we're going to be spending the money, I mean, the restoration of Island Grove Bridge is going to come before us before too long. Some of the, some of the improvements we wanted on Griffin's Dairy is money that they, the walkways and stuff. It's a valid argument, I, I could...
But you're going to pay for those anyways, right? You're going to pay for them either through this, and a portion of that will be paid for through the surcharge on, I mean, the tax stamps that you pay. But in Hanson, they have a 1.5% assessment for the CPA. In fiscal year 2013, $164,000 of that was through the property tax. $39,000 of that was through the CPA fund. So what is that to vote? What are you getting on that? 10, 15, 20 cents?
Yeah, 20 cents, 20%.
What's the amount of 20%?
Where are you going to get 20% on your money anywhere else?
But you just raised your own taxes by $164,000 to get...
But it's, it's smart money, to me, you know what, I, I'm not, I can understand, I can understand both sides of the argument, I can certainly understand. To me, personally, I'm going to support it, that's all I'm telling you.
This has to go to a ballot anyway.
Well, that's all this is, is to put it on the ballot.
That's right.
That's all this is.
So why not put it on the ballot, and let the people go to the ballot?
That's what I'm saying.
Let them decide.
Right. It is, it's a tough decision, there's two sides to the argument, and I just know, and sitting here, I'd be foolhardy to tell everybody that everything's just roses, because we do have a lot of things that have to, have to be done. And how do you face the reality of that, is, I'm just offering a suggestion that, you know, if we borrow the money, fine, we're going to pay the interest on it. But if we, if we save the money, and we're getting an additional, we're not only paying, we're not paying interest on money we borrowed, we're ahead of the game. They're giving us another 15% on top of it, so. It's almost like, you know, you pay your credit card bills, or you don't pay it. You don't pay it, you get fined, you pay the fees, and you pay more. But if you pay your credit card bills, they give you rewards, and that's how I look at it.
I get that, of course.
But I never get the rewards, my wife does. All right, so, again, I'd accept the motion, I think we're just looking for what I approve or disapprove, it really doesn't matter to me, but...
It doesn't matter to you.
It doesn't matter to you.
Of course it does. All right, so all in favor of supporting the article?
Somebody has to make the motion first.
I would make the motion that the Selectmen support Article seven.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bazanson, second right. Is Jansen any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. All right, thank you. No thanking me.
Article eight, Mr. Chairman, is a request to, for almost about nineteen thousand dollars to pay sick leave vacation benefit buyback for, for fired personnel. Article nine is to fund the annual request by petition for health imperatives, Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, formerly a New Day, formerly Women's Crisis Center, also, which is, and it, it is not also in the budget. Just, I know that is a great question occasionally. Article ten is by the Water Commission for forty-two hundred dollars for sick leave buyback for a retiring employee. Article eleven is a vote for two million dollars from, from the Water Commission for replacement for the water main replacement programs and upgrades. Article twelve is fourteen thousand dollar request by the School Committee for Student Transportation Services. Article thirteen is by the Treasure Collector to authorize him as tax title custodian to accept a piece of property, and that is at Chestnut Street, in lieu of foreclosure. Article fourteen is to raise and appropriate the one point two million for the ladder truck that was, and to rescind last year's borrowing vote. As you remember, last year, the town voted to borrow, since the capital exclusion vote was successful, this is allowing the town to, to essentially switch those mechanisms for purchasing the vehicle. And I'm not sure why it says by town, by town manager, we'll have to, should be Board of Selectmen, or if there's any heat on that, we'll make sure that's clear, so. Article fifteen is by the Planning Board, which would be to be able to utilize a bond deposit for the purposes of finishing a piece of property, an unfinished piece of business by a developer.
We know where that is?
This is the generic approval that allows them to do that.
Oh.
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry. Article sixteen is, would be to authorize the Planning Board to expend that surety to complete roadway known as Mayflower Avenue.
So fifteen and sixteen are connected?
They, they do go together, correct. And Article seventeen is the proposed new sign by law by the Planning Board. You know, it was zoning.
This was right to page twenty-three?
Yeah, that was, yeah, you beat me to it, thank you, yeah.
Do you mind reading it?
I'd be happy to, not now.
And will Town Council speak upon that, or will the zoning board speak upon that if there's questions?
I believe Planning Board is going to be speaking about this, but Town Council obviously has reviewed.
Just to heads up, if, I think I'm, I'm right on this, but the chairman of the Planning Board is not gonna be around, so just wanted to make that. He's very good, he's a very good speaker, that's why I mentioned that. He will not be around, so I just.
All right, I don't know who, who they have designated, whether it be the vice chairman, I, I'm not sure, but we'll. Article eighteen is another article by the Planning Board, a zoning amendment regarding buffer strips. Article twenty is a zoning article regarding outdoor lighting. Due to the existing bylaw. Article twenty-one is, again, another zoning article proposed by the Planning Board to amend dimensional and density regulations.
Can I ask why, if they're, by the zoning board, the Planning Board speaks upon them, I'm, I'm acting dumb here, but doesn't, on these articles, or the zoning board articles, and the Planning Board spoke and gave us detail about them, is that because the Planning Board is asking the zoning board to do that, or is it?
Planning Board writes the zoning bylaws.
They're required to hold, to provide an, an opinion to the town on all zoning, requested zoning changes, the Planning Board.
It has to go through the Planning Board, and then I believe it's voted by the zoning board, too.
But there are, as Kenny said, there are some that are proposed by the Planning Board, and some that are proposed by the zoning board.
I just.
Well, like, this has given the Planning Board authorization to do a special permit that is typically done by the zoning board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious why the zoning board is proposing some, and the Planning Board is proposing others.
Because I think what you'll see is the Planning Board would do, I guess, the zoning changes.
Because some of these are zoning changes proposed by the Planning.
Regardless of who's proposing it, keeping in mind that the ZBA may be proposing it, the Planning Board is still required to make a recommendation at town meeting.
Okay.
My, my concern is that if questions arise from these articles, which there probably will be, especially the L I one and the solar, I just want to make sure that, that someone is concise. Now, we had the advantage of having our town moderator get up, who's an attorney, and, and he will not have the luxury of doing that at, at town meeting. I just have concerns that I, I'm fairly certain the Planning Board Chairman will not be there. I just, I don't want to belittle anyone, or put anybody on the spot that's not prepared, so I just want to make sure that someone can speak upon these articles that's knowledgeable, so.
Good point.
We have a, a, a planning meeting tomorrow afternoon with the moderator and.
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Tomorrow.
What's today? Today's Tuesday, yes, okay, Wednesday, we have a play about four o'clock, so that we'll make sure this is a topic of discussion.
We all know how we can, tell me it can get ugly very quickly, if no one's there to answer questions.
These, these planning and zoning are so.
Well, they're very technical.
Yeah.
Article, I'm sorry, I believe we're on twenty-two, is again a zoning, requested zoning change regarding off-street parking regulations. And as applicable to multi-unit housing.
Can I just speak to, when, when we did, when we did have the Planning Board here, though, with the Finance Committee, it was a joint meeting, we did all ask questions, and I don't think anybody had any major issues, except for the the rezoning of the airbase.
Is it twenty-four, the airbase one that they're gonna, not, they're gonna pass over?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And Article twenty-three is another request to delete the transitional commercial district on the Westerly side of Route eighteen.
Can I ask, I wasn't here for that meeting, that joint meeting, so. Does anybody recall why they're doing that on one side of Route eighteen is gonna be classified in one district on the other side? A different district. Did they give any rationale for why that was happening?
I think it was to make it the same as the other side.
Yeah. Isn't that what he talked about?
To delete the transitional commercial district on the Westerly side.
Right.
And reclassify it as a highway commercial, so.
That's.
Right now, they are not that way? They're not consistent?
They're not consistent, that's right.
Thanks.
And Article twenty-four would have been, it is the article pertaining to rezoning at what is Southfield, but was previously noted, the Planning Board is going to be recommending that that be passed over. Article twenty-five is another zoning request amending the site plan, I'm sorry, the regulations pertaining to site plan review. And Article twenty-six, which is on page twenty-nine through page thirty, sorry, I'm counting here, through page, into page thirty-six, is the proposal by the Planning Board for a bylaw pertaining to solar. Large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. And Article twenty-seven, which begin, begins on page thirty-six, is an article that will be passed over, because there are no collective bargaining agreements in place to be funded at this time. That happens by next week, they'll, miracles. And Article twenty-eight is, would be an update to the Finance Committee bylaw pertaining to its membership.
And they recommended that, that's good.
Article twenty-nine is the article, actually the last article, and that's the one by petition seeking the town's input on discontinuation of the Common Core standards.
Any questions?
Yeah, can I go back to twenty-eight, please? That's the Finance Committee. What is the purpose of that, that if you take out nomination papers, you have to resign from PNCOM, and not any other board in town? I'm just curious what the reason is.
I was gonna say, there's been a lot of talk about it throughout the years, about, once you pull papers, have you announced your candidacy? And because the Finance Committee, usually at that same time, is knee-deep in budget, Terry, you know, conversations and that stuff, once you've announced your candidacy, should you still be on a board that's dealing with budgets and that type of thing? And truly, if you've, if you've announced your candidacy, you've announced it. And that's what we're trying to say here, is that if you've taken out nomination papers, you've officially announced your candidacy, and you should no longer be on a board. That's, that's determining other, other departments' budgets.
Every, every, every budget in town, you're, you're.
Do you, do you hold undue influence while you're running?
Right, and this is actually defining the current language, which is, which is ambiguous as to how you interpret.
Well, I never, I never, I served as moderator, I've read that a thousand times. I never, ever considered it ambiguous.
So it's always been a one cue.
Well, the.
You can't, you can't use it, you can't use it as a launching pad for a, a political campaign. And what the bylaw states is that if you announce your candidacy, and that, for whatever reason, this year became an issue, that you, you announce your candidacy until you turn your papers in, and I adamantly disagreed with that, because when you become a candidate and you pull papers, you fill out your name, your address in the, in the office you're seeking, and announce means to make public. There's no, nothing more to it. To me, it was simple.
Right, if you pull papers, you're a candidate.
But that's, that's to clarify, Alex, they didn't, whatever, people didn't agree with that. And, and some people, most people I talked to agreed with it, but because of that, we had Town Council, who was one of the people that didn't agree, and I, I mean, I, she's a brilliant person, and, and she just said, no, just to clarify it, it's ambiguous, and to me, to me, again, I just used the word announce, to me, it's pretty simple. And it, it covered it, but she wanted it to be a little bit more thorough, and so this is what she recommended we put in to change it.
But going back to the original reason for this is because you would have more knowledge than someone else.
Influence, it's more influence, I think. It's, it's the fact that when you're on the Finance Committee, you're influencing town meeting with regard to budget. And it's, I, I've always seen it as a timing thing, too. I know myself when I ran.
No, because there's people, when I was moderator, and that was a question, too, and that's the way it was always handled in the past, as soon as you announced. Because you could have three people sitting on the Finance Committee, one, one's sitting for the board, a selectman, one for the school committee. And basically, especially nowadays, it's on TV, and it says, you could kind of run your campaign.
And again, this really just clarifies the existing.
That's what it comes, yeah.
Change per se.
It's been around, I don't know how long that.
And I.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So.
So what do we do with the, the, okay, so have we done what we agreed to, or don't agree to?
We have not, no, we stopped at Article seven.
Okay, like, where are we on this? Can I ask one question about Article twenty-nine, before we, that's the last article?
What page would that be, oh, I'm sorry.
That would be the last one, about Park. Were we asking, or have we asked Town Council whether this is just a sense of the meeting type of?
Yes, this is, this would only be, this would be an advisory vote only, to, correct.
And just a note, too, Whitman Town Meeting had the same thing, and it was actually the exact same, well, it was, it's gonna be a different number now, but it was Article thirty-one, so at the end of their town meeting, and the petitioner stated that they passed it, but I think they passed over it, if I read correctly. They passed over it, which is a big difference between passing the article and passing over. So I just wanna, you know, not that it makes a difference tonight, but if it comes up at that meeting, I might.
Yeah, that passing over is a nice way of saying no. But just to be clear about this, I've heard some rumors that if we were, or town meeting were to pass this, it was somehow going to implicate us as bad guys, and it would in fact reflect on our school building. And that's not true. It doesn't have anything to do with it, that it would put us in bad stead, you know, so. I just wanted to be clear, because I did, and I said, what are you talking about, this, you know? Okay. So I guess I'd accept a motion to vote the remaining articles of the annual town meeting as.
Concur, concur with the Finance Committee's recommendations on the remaining.
Well, except for the one we changed, which I think was Article eight. We took a vote on that, yeah, you're right.
That was on the special.
Right, okay. No, it was on the annual, was it?
We took a vote on seven, also.
Seven, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it was on the Community Preservation Act.
Yeah.
Eight on, I don't think we've taken any votes.
But we, there's no disagreement, so I'd suggest we vote them all as a package.
I just, I do have just a concern, and I'm not sure, Maureen, you might be able to address this. As far as the Finance Committee deferring on all these.
In the, in the past, we've always kind of deferred to, like, the zoning ones, the planning ones, because basically, it really wasn't monetary, if you will, so they've always kind of deferred to them. But deferring to a petitioner, I've never seen the Finance Committee defer to a petitioner, which is what they're, what they're doing on twenty-nine. I've never actually seen that before, that's what I was kind of questioning.
Just because of the sense of the meeting vote, it really doesn't have.
Yeah.
I think there's some confusion over that whole thing, which might be cleared up tomorrow afternoon with the Town Council.
It does, as far as, as far as the Finance Committee goes, but I, I have a problem with us deferring on articles. We're the Board of Selectmen, we're considered the leaders of the town, and for us to just kick the can and say, oh, forget it, we're not gonna take.
All right, so what do you want?
If we're gonna make recommendations, we should make recommendations, if we.
All right, go ahead. Which, which article?
Which article? We have to start at number eight. Now we can go eight, nine, ten.
Oh, I just, I was only for trying to move the ball along.
Now, I understand, and if people want to defer, that's fine, too, but I just, personally, I don't think that's something we should do.
Which one's deferred?
Well, let's go, I can make a motion that we approve, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And then that brings us up to the zoning articles. So I'll make that motion.
Okay. Make a motion, Mr. Burbine?
Yep, eight through sixteen of the.
Eight through sixteen?
Eight through sixteen, Selectmen recommend approval.
Promptly seconded by.
No, they, no, don't recommend approval, you recommend agreeing with the Finance Committee's recommendation.
They approve.
Oh, you skipped the.
I haven't got this. Eight through sixteen.
Eight through sixteen, okay, sorry.
We recommend approval.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Seventeen is signed.
Signed by.
If I read it a hundred times.
The page is seventeen?
Seventeen.
Page twenty-three, actually, it ends on twenty-three.
Lot signs, multiple buffet signs, internal illuminated sign. Institutional use.
So the Finance Committee is deferring to the zoning board of appeals on that.
I, I, we did, Bruce Hughes came in and did explain what that was all about, he answered a series of questions. And Sean got up and he gave off of some clarity beyond that. So I have no problem with it.
The only problem I have is what I just spoke upon earlier, is that if the Selectmen approve these articles, which, I mean, I, we do approve them, I think, because, you know, a board in town, I don't want to have to get stuck going up there to defend it, if there's no one else from the zoning board or the Planning Board.
Oh, that, that, that could be an issue.
You're not the petitioner. No, and I can tell you, the zoning board chair has agreed to have Bruce Hughes speak on all those articles. They've worked that out.
Was he the one that spoke to us?
Yeah, Bruce is here.
It's, it's terribly complicated, I think, no doubt about it. So I'd accept the motion not to approve it, because it's too complicated. All right, what's, what's your will? It's getting late, it's getting dark.
Go ahead, Andy.
I'm not making any motion. I, I just don't think it was something that was, if somebody wants to make a motion to defer, that's fine, I'm not gonna make a motion to defer.
I'll make a motion, we approve it. I mean, they did come here, they did answer the questions, I, I don't, I think they, there wasn't any issues.
Yeah, I don't think I had any issue with it. I'll second, I'll second the recommendation to approve that.
Okay, a motion being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls.
Not that hot. Then go ahead, make them.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And eighteen, now they defer to planning. Buffering lot lines.
Yeah, it's just a taping fence, so it comes down so you can see. Move we recommend approval.
I'll second that.
Motion had been seconded, all in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous.
Let's see, we have nineteen. Nineteen, they defer, wait. They're deferring.
I don't see a recommendation on nineteen.
Ah, it's on the top of page twenty-four.
Move that we recommend approval of article nineteen.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous.
Outdoor lighting.
Article twenty, outdoor lighting, motion that we recommend approval of Article twenty?
Second.
That, actually, Andy, you weren't here, but that was a pretty lively debate, and it was, we learned a lot from that.
We did.
It was good.
I watched it on TV.
Yeah.
That was awesome, that meeting, wasn't it?
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a motion seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous. Twenty-one is.
No, this was if the frontage changed, it wouldn't affect the. I'll make a motion that we approve, Article twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous.
Off speed parking.
I remember this, I'll, motion to recommend approval. Twenty-two.
Second. Motion having been seconded, all in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous.
Twenty-three.
That wasn't what I just asked the question of. Consistent on both sides of Route eighteen?
Motion to recommend approval on twenty-three?
I don't remember talking about this one, actually.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And they explained it because, to keep it uniform, because whatever reason, there was a glitch in the transitional commercial, I don't remember the details.
Did all of the, I don't even remember what part of eighteen it was, but.
Okay, so we're on twenty-four now?
Went from Route one-twenty-three, up past the strip law.
Oh, that's right, yes, it was. Yes, now I remember it. I'll second that if it hasn't been seconded. Okay, time for me to make Mr. Burbine mad. All in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous.
Okay, now we're on twenty-four.
Twenty-four is passed over. Well, we should recommend if it passed over, too, I think.
This is a Southfield one?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
Motion to recommend passing over Article twenty-four.
Second.
And just before we do that, I think the members received the legal opinion.
Yes.
Okay, fine. All right, a motion to pass over Article twenty-four by Maureen, seconded by Mr. Burbine, all in favor? Yes, all opposed, that's unanimous.
Twenty-five.
Oh, this was the adword, to save some of the residents a little bit of money, right, that it wouldn't require for Meyer.
Oh, more than twenty percent.
Just like plan review.
Yeah, if someone came with a small project, they wouldn't require, like, engineer drawings and that sort of stuff, so I recommend approval of Article twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous.
Now, we're on the solar one, twenty-six.
I would actually like to defer to this one, because it's very complicated, and I don't.
I know there may be a motion to amend this one, too, on the.
What, the solar one?
Maybe it might be better to wait on that. The R forty zone, right now, the way it's worded, with a special permit, you'd be able to put a solar field in the R forty zone, but I think one of the neighbors up there on Karen Lane is gonna make a motion to not allow a special permit, just not allow that use in the R forty zone.
I would make a motion to defer to the Planning Board for Article twenty-six.
I was stuck on that.
I was gonna make a motion to defer to the Sage Committee, but.
But there's already in the.
Their member's short, so.
Okay, so your motion, I'm sorry, Ken.
Defer.
Okay.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
No, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
The deferring, yeah.
He doesn't want to defer. That's okay. We're deferring. But that's okay, no, it's understood. Twenty-seven, unable to take action, oh, this is because twenty-seven, we don't know if there's collective bargaining.
Right, I would say, at this point, it would seem that this would be, we would be asking to pass over this article.
Or take no action.
But if you settle something before that, we can, okay.
Recommendations can be changed.
Move we recommend passing over Article twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Burbine.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Maureen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous.
Make a motion to approve Article twenty-eight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous.
Make a motion to approve Article twenty-nine?
To approve it?
Yeah. Wait, wait, no, approve means discontinue, correct?
Are you recommending approval of that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
That's the one by petition?
Mm-hmm.
Fine. Any further discussion?
Just say no to Common Core, basically.
But let me just get this correct, it's saying, you want to notify our representatives that we have issues, more or less, isn't it?
To discontinue the use of Common Core state standards in park testing.
I guess what maybe.
Continue on with the, basically, I think they, continue with the EMCA style.
I thought it was like a move.
Move point?
Yeah.
It is, but it's basically, we're recommending the town agree to this, which sends a message that.
We're not the only town having a problem with that, because I drive around the county and I see a lot of signs. Okay, so the motion is to approve it by Mr. Coyle, seconded by Mr. Bazanson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Was that unanimous?
Yeah.
It was.
Okay. We're all set with the recommendations, there's public comment.
You haven't stayed here, Rich, for all, for public comment?
I just like watching.
It is.
Can I ask you a question? Maybe, it may go to the town manager, and before the high school gets torn down, would there be an opportunity for people to bid, to buy parts of the, parts of it, like old lockers and that sort of stuff?
I was thinking that, too.
To raise money for the town?
Like the penalty box or something.
Well, just parts of it, I mean, you know, the parquet floor, I mean, I know it sounds silly, but if you can make some money off of it.
I was walking out there, and they have the big granite steps. I mean.
No, but some of the stuff inside, my, the reason I bring this up is, Abington, several years ago, they got new street signs with, you know, on the middle, but the old ones, I don't know whatever happened to them, someone might have sold it for scrap, I think it would be neat to auction them off, or see if people wanted to buy them.
I would think it would depend how the demolition RFP was written, because typically, the demo company wants everything so they can sell it.
Right.
And that's included.
Built into their.
That's right.
I just thought it'd be kind of neat to own a part of the high school.
My, my high school got turned up.
You're smiling over there, but I'm serious, you know?
Yeah.
He spends so much time there.
We have an obligation to maximize the tax.
Absolutely.
So whatever, if we get a favorable bid for demolition by including various components, we'll look at that. If we have an opportunity to have a yacht sale, we're gonna turn and sell off pieces of that, and if that comes within a term, we can include that as well. So, but we're open, we did have a suggestion from a member of.
Rich, you know what, you might, if you don't.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't want to keep you guys going, but.
Thank you.
That lunch cot, right, I was really attached that lunch cot over at the high school, and I was hoping.
To answer your question, Kenny, we, we have an obligation to the taxpayers to maximize their dollars, so depending upon the demolition bids, we'll look at, you know, if the demolition bid includes the demolition company taking components of that, and we can maximize taxpayer dollars in that fashion, we will. There will likely be components, you know, whether it be desks, or, you know, various, you know, intricate pieces that don't necessarily, the demolition company doesn't have an interest in, but they may have some type of sentimental value, and we'll have, again, for lack of a better term, you know, consider a yacht sale, if you will, to be able to sell some of those components off. There was a request from someone that works in the school department about potentially donating, you know, stuff to a third world country or something like that, and while I think it's a great idea, and I'm all for charity, I think if we can get a nickel for a desk or a chair, that we can return back to the taxpayers, that's where our primary obligation lies. Does that answer your question?
That was a very good answer, and thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rich.
Someone didn't think it was a stupid question.
You want your locker, don't you?
No, I just think it's a neat idea to do, you know?
No, it is.
No, you talk about, you just brought the point, that the Boston Garden, you know, they sold pieces of that off, and what'd you say, Terry O'Reilly?
Terry O'Reilly bought the penalty boxes, and he has it on wheels, and he'll bring it around to different.
He spends so much, he spends so much time in it.
I might want the assistant principal's office.
There you go.
Okay, any further questions, or anything we're forgetting? We should remind the residents, please, 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 next Monday evening, June second, is our.
June eighth.
June eighth. Been a long night.
Long night, Mike.
Long night. Is our special and annual town meeting, we, the more people we get, the faster we get going, the quicker we'll be out of there, and again, you know, even if you're on the dissenting side of this, I always respected those people when I was moderator, that you had the courage to stand up and speak your piece, and that's what it's all about, so don't just sit there, you're more than welcome to come, so be there or be square.